Good evening, everyone. I'll call this city council meeting to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Elliott.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Sandal.
Here.
Mayor Gotown.
Here. We have no one for the open forum. At this time, I'd like everybody to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask the council's approval of the minutes of the special city council work session of November 26, 2013, the special concurrent city council HRA and Planning Commission work session of November 26, 2013, the regular city council meeting of November 26, 2013, and the special city council meeting, Truth and Taxation, of December 3, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, passes. Council discussion. Councilmember Elliott, I will start with you.
Okay.
Please.
I'm going to have our guru put a little poster up for us. Some of our neighbors in Richfield have come up with a wonderful idea of having the first annual Richfield New Year's Eve Gala or Gala. Part of the incentive for doing this is we've got a resident in Richfield, Dick Erickson, who's been a fairly noteworthy band member for the last 20 years. I think he played bass with Three Dog Night and has continued to perform musically for the last 20 years. He's the leader of the Teddy Bear Band. But this is the first New Year's Eve he's had open, and he spoke with some of his neighbors and other residents in Richfield, thought it'd be nice to stay home and play to his neighbors and party with the neighbors. So they went over and rented the American Legion. They're having a New Year's Eve party. It's got all the, what's the word I'm looking for? The good and the bad of New Year's Eve. You've got dancing and hors d'oeuvres. There'll be a raffle, party favors. It's a cash bar. It's $30 a person. It's semi-formal. I asked Scott Sharp what he meant by that because I've never been formal, much less semi-formal, so I guess I'll have to figure out what I'm going to wear. But it, I think it's going to be nice. It's an opportunity for friends and neighbors in Richfield to gather in a party festive atmosphere. You're close to home. I'm sure there's going to be plenty of opportunities. I'll be one of them that will be guest driving people that feel they need a ride home, so that's not going to be a problem. And most importantly, the proceeds are going to go to the Richfield Public Schools and the Spartan Foundation, which I think allows you to have a great time and also benefit the community at the same time. It's interesting, I didn't see the posters before they printed them, and I did talk with Bill Fillmore, the manager of our liquor stores, and the tickets will be for sale there. They've got a webpage, I think it's newyearseve@gmail.com. It's on the poster. And I'm not sure how my name and my phone number got up there as the contact. They ask you to do something, you do it, and the next thing you know, you're right in front and leading it. So anyhow, I've got no problems. Give me a call. I've got some tickets. I can point you in the direction, but I really hope that this turns into a wonderful community event, that everybody has an opportunity to attend and go to. So, thank you.
Yes, thanks. Thanks for bringing that to us.
I have a definition of formal or semi-formal. That means you put pants over your long johns.
Okay, all right. Got it. I think I can do that.
Councilmember Garcia, I'll let you go next.
And we know you're, and heard you're really a party boy.
We've kept that secret for a long time.
Well, I've got one that really should go to councilmember Elliott, but being that he didn't mention it. Penn Central Meeting, which will be held November, December the 19th, from 7:30 to 9 o'clock a.m., will be having Congressman Keith Ellison there, and that will be held at the Hope Silver Spoon Restaurant, which is on Penn Avenue, 6700 Penn Avenue. And one of the things that I noticed, you know, because I did look at the Penn Central of Richfield site, boy, that is so very well done. That is just, and it, talk about boosting, you know, all those businesses, and it's colorful, and it's just so easy to get in there and navigate. I mean, I was very, very impressed. And I know you're a member of that committee.
I would suggest that it's, the webpage is collaborative effort, but Gordon Hanson is the leader of that, and he does a wonderful job. So kudos to Gordon.
Yes, and Gordy's here. Hey Gordy, thank you for your good work. And then the other thing is there's a Candlelight and Ice Event being held December the 31st at Woodlake Nature Center, and that's from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and that's a real family event. So if you want to walk by candlelight afterwards, there's hot cocoa and marshmallows that you can toast, and it's a lot of fun. So hopefully, the weather by that time will have above zero. Nice warm spell. And then finally, the Academy of Holy Angels is having an open house tomorrow at 5:30 at the Convocation Center, and they're going to be talking about their plan. And unfortunately, you know, you had to submit questions prior to the meeting, and the deadline was today at noon. But I would suggest, I know it's a rather controversial issue, and we've had a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls regarding, and I don't know if I've had more because that happens to be in the ward I represent, but I would suggest that people attend just, you know, to find out what's going on and to also show that numbers do count and that your voice needs to be heard. If maybe you don't get up and speak, just by virtue of you being there, you make a statement.
Thank you.
And if you want more information, visit their website, because the presentation they made to us was on their website, and it's exactly what they told us, so visit their website.
Just Google it. I just have one quick thing I wanted to also mention. There's a public open house to get your input on the proposed Lindell Avenue pedestrian amenities. The city wants your input on pedestrian amenities at the Lakes of Lindell area. There'll be an open house on Thursday, December 12th, from 4 to 6 at Woodlake Center. Sure, this is also on our website, but just so. 6710 Lake Shore Drive. The input will be used for the final recommendations to the city council in January, so we are looking to move forward on some of this. Please come. You can also send questions in. You can contact Jeff Pearson if you have anything. He's our engineer working on this. So please, if you have anything to, and you can't make the meeting, please send something in and talk about it. Get up on the website. Councilmember Sandal.
Several people have already tapped a couple of my announcements, so that's good. There is another winter event, if you're really bored with being inside the house and you just want to get out there and enjoy the elements. This will be at Lindell Garden, which is the old Lindell Garden Center, and it'll be a winter event from 4 to 7 this Saturday, December 21st. And they have all sorts of interesting outside activities and food and fun things going on for the family, and so if you want to get out and are looking for a pretty inexpensive place to go and have a good time, that would be good.
Councilmember Fitz Henry, you're last this time.
Okay, I get to run over there if you don't mind. And I got to learn how to switch back to the computer. What I want to do is, I had the opportunity to go to the dispatcher's final call and that, and these, I'm just going to show the slides here. 73 years of service, he once dispatched Eden Prairie Police, and total of 157.5 years experience was in dispatch. These are some of the slides of our dispatchers. You can see that's Charlie at our council before the last one. That was our last council that we had, the last dispatch center. But if you look at how these people have aged, and, me too. I was dispatched by him for 30 years, along with other people, so. And I really want to take my hat off to these folks. They stuck around when they knew that our dispatch center was going, and I did attend the dispatch center training in Edina, and I'm very confident, and from listening to what has gone on, on the channel, in dispatch, Edina took the bull by the horns and really wrangled it in. They're doing a fine job. If you look at some of the years we have here, it just went by Jay Burns, it was 39 years, 22 and 1/2 for Debbie Erickson, 38 and 1/2 for Lynn Warner. All these people got jobs, and I want to thank the Public Safety Director and the Chief for making sure that we took care of our people and that they were taken care of as far as getting jobs in places. One did retire, and that was Jay. She decided she's going to move to Arizona.
Oh.
I don't know why she'd do that living in Minnesota.
[laughing].
And hopefully, I'll have the audio. If not, I'll play it on my iPad, but we don't know if it links up to the PowerPoint presentation here, which it may not. We'll find out. It probably does not. So I'm going to play the audio of the last two calls, and you should hear it on my iPad. First one is the one they put out to all the other agencies.
[inaudible] Our dispatch center will be closing after 73 years. Edina Station Center will be taking over dispatch operations. All phone numbers will remain the same. We will test them.
That was the message that we put out to all the other agencies.
Richfield Dispatch, 1042 after 157 and 1/2, five years of service. And now, the characters, Steve Anderson, 1 and 1/2 years, Dippie Doyle, 5 and 1/2 years, Danny Pierce, 8 and 1/2 years, Jill Anderson, 17 and 1/2 years, Deb Pearson, 12 years, Patty Knight, 23 and 1/2 years, Lynn Warner, 38 and 1/2 years, and Jay Burns, 39 years. It has been an honor and a privilege to dispatch for the police officers and firefighters of the city of Richmond. We will truly miss you. Stay safe.
Thanks to the dispatchers.
That was really nice of you to bring that, so prepared for us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we all miss them. I know I used to call them from time to time. At this time, I could ask the council's approval of the agenda with one change, an addition of a 2A, a presentation of the Richfield Foundation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I would like to introduce the Chair of the Richfield Foundation, Steve Quam.
Thank you, members of the council, for inviting the Richfield City Council to, or the Richfield Foundation to present our grants to our recipients this year at your council meeting. And at this time, I'd like to ask the members of the Richfield Foundation Board of Trustees who are here to come and join me. The Richfield Foundation is the community foundation for Richfield. We have 18 trustees. They include our city manager, who's distracted across the way over there, our mayor, our superintendent of schools, our chair of the school board, and many other people who've been very active in the community and know it well. Our goal is to make sure that we have successful kids in our community, that we have secure families, and that we have a strong community. And one of the things that's interesting about the foundation, I think, is that we are just completing our 25th year, the community's foundation. It has an ongoing endowment from which we are able to give grants. One of the unique things about that is that if you gave to the foundation 25 years ago, you might be giving to the support of an emerging need that's happening right here and now today. For example, you might be giving equipment tonight to an advocacy group against violence in the families so that they can make presentations to kids in the schools on social media like Facebook, but many other kinds that I hadn't even heard of before, and have them use their phones at the very same time to deal with cyberbullying, which if you thought about giving for that 25 years ago, you wouldn't have had an idea that you might be supporting that. But you know, by giving to the Richfield Foundation, you are giving to something that will keep on meeting the needs that this community has. At this point, I'd like to begin calling names and talking to the people that are giving the checks out to the people that are here from the receiving grants, and as you come up, we'd ask you to give just a sentence or two about what it is that your grant is going to do. So the first one is to Cornerstone for $1,580.
Thank you very much. We were, we are the organization that will be working with Snapchat and Twitter and Instagram and all those other things besides Facebook, as kids are slowly putting Facebook to the side. It is slowly on its way out the door for many of the young people for a variety of reasons, and it's that need that we have to be able to present to kids. Last year, we presented to over 1,200 students in the Richfield School District, over 10,000 throughout the South Hennepin area. It's a true pleasure to work inside the schools. I was personally, the first school that I walked into was Richfield High School. So, and that was in 1997, and I've been the Violence Prevention Coordinator for Cornerstone, which is a domestic violence agency that serves this community and much of South Hennepin and also Brooklyn Park. And to see the changing world, I cannot imagine the evolution. I cannot even imagine the 15 years of the evolution that technology has taken in our need to be able to get into those classrooms and present in ways that the kids feel is relevant, is up to date, and meets kids where they're at. We need to get ourselves into their phones, so thank you very much.
Ask you to say, please, stand up for a second.
All right. Right there.
You know, Mr. Quam?
Yes.
If I could interrupt, I just wanted to let folks know that Susan Rosenberg was one of the founders of Cornerstone, and so, you know, it's great that she's still working on behalf of something she truly believes in.
Thanks for mentioning that. The next grant is to Headway Health Services for $1,000. Do you have anyone here from Headway? The next is Mira for $2,000.
Well, we certainly thank you for the opportunity to use this money in our funding for our outreach projects for Mira. My associate here will present a little bit of our sewing cohort that was around this year, and hopefully will develop into some cottage industries. This is a sample of some of the items that have been featured by our sewing group and also were featured at the House of Prayer at their recent craft opportunity. And Mira continues to do many projects throughout the community to outreach to the Latino community and communicate ways of effectively helping with health issues, legal issues, cottage industries, and other assorted industries. Thank you very much.
You can come up to the [inaudible].
You got to stay up here. We hold you captive.
Oasis for Youth, $1,000. If you give your name.
My name is Leslie Stiles, and I have the honor of serving as the Board President of Oasis for Youth. We are an agency that serves Richfield, Bloomington, and Edina, and our target audience is young people in these suburbs who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. And we're a relatively new organization, just three years old, but we're growing fast. We are working more in the schools this year. We're doing outreach to Bloomington High School and RCEP, in addition to Bloomington and Edina High Schools. And our goal is to help young people stabilize their lives. We provide resources such as bus cards, so this $1,000 grant will help with bus cards, clothing for first jobs, deposits for apartments. It will be put to very good use. Thank you so much.
The Richfield Fourth of July celebrations, $1,000.
I'm Katie Robinson, and I'm the President of the Richfield Fourth of July Committee. I'm sick, so I apologize for my hoarse voice. For those of you who don't know what we do, we are the committee 100% volunteer and 100% sponsor that puts on family night, the street dance, the fireworks, the parade, and for more information, you can go to our website at richfieldfourthofjuly.com. This money will go to our general operating fund that helps us, and it costs us over $100,000 to put on every year, so this will do a great benefit to help us continue working for many years to come. So thank you.
The Richfield Arts Commission, $2,000.
Hi, I'm Kevin Close, Chair of the Richfield Arts Commission. This is Alex Dahl. He's a member of the Arts Commission. We do a lot in promoting and advocating for arts in Richfield, and I wouldn't be doing my job right now if I didn't plug the Richfield Teen Art Show at the Augsburg Park Library. You can check it out. It's really great. With the money that we received tonight from the Richfield Foundation, we're going to be buying two potters wheels that we're going to use at more or less all of our events. We can use it for spin art, we're going to use it for throwing pots. It's going to be really great, and any of the leftover funds we have from that will just go back into our events to further promote art in Richfield, so thank you very much.
Richfield Baseball, Inc., $300.
My name is Tim Paulus. I'm the President of Richfield Baseball. Richfield Baseball, Inc. is the youth baseball program in town for kids aged 4 to 15. We used to be 4 to 12. We've combined with Program 13 to 15 this year. Our hope with this money is to help grow our program. We have 650 kids in our program, 350 are from Richfield. We really want to grow the resident numbers, and our target demographic is, well, other than just Richfield kids, because we want all of them. We realize we are very light on the Latino population, and so we are hoping to, you know, pay for quality translation of our marketing materials and help placement of our marketing materials. What we've learned over time is that we're hiding in plain sight, so we need to fund a way, and this will go long in that direction towards helping us be more out in the open and hopefully find more kids from town to play baseball.
Richfield ELC Fund, $2,000.
As you may be aware, the sixth grade Eagle Bluff trip is a longstanding tradition in our community, and last year, 209 sixth graders attended this four-day environmental trip to Lanesboro, Minnesota. 85 of these students had some sort of financial assistance through scholarships. This year, with this grant, we will be able to provide more financial assistance to students so that they have the opportunity to attend this trip as well. On behalf of the sixth grade, we say thank you.
Richfield Girls Basketball Association, $300.
Hi, my name is Scott Jones. I'm with Richfield Girls Basketball Association. We run the basketball program for kids kindergarten through eighth grade. This money's going to be used for scholarships to help kids play basketball.
Richfield Meals on Wheels, $300.
I am the Vice President of Richfield Meals on Wheels. For over 40 years, Meals on Wheels has been delivering meals to seniors, to disabled, and ill-Richfield residents. Our goal is to provide low-cost nutritious meals to residents who are unable to prepare their own food, who have no other outside contact many days, and this will enable them hopefully to stay in their homes longer. To keep the meals affordable, we have volunteer drivers from the churches in Richfield, and we deliver these meals into single-family homes and to multifamily residents. Because of rising costs and because of decreasing support from the Richfield churches, it's necessary for us to look for outside sources of funding. So we're very grateful to the Richfield Foundation for helping us out.
Our 11th and final gift is the Richfield Police Multicultural Advisory Committee, Unity in the Community Event, $2,000.
Thank you so much. Wow, this is just sitting back there is being, it's an honor to be in this group, if I may say, what great things that are going on in the community. My name is Amy Dusek. I'm a community liaison with the Richfield Police Department, and I am here on behalf of the Unity in the Community Event Chair, Shelley Eller Turner, who could not, sends her apologies, could not make this. 'Tis the season, it's holiday concert night for her daughter. So this event, this is, I know we've done this, I'm on the spot, I think it's our fifth year, and it will be happening in May, and this event, Unity in the Community, will be, or is, a family, a free family event, open to anyone, celebrates diversity. So thank you very much.
That completes our grants for this year. The total is $13,480. In case anyone would like to give us some money to be able to keep on doing this, you can find us at richfieldfoundationmn.org and see how you can help us to continue to do this. At this point, we'll ask that we take the picture and let the council get on with its business. Thank you again to the council.[1771.12]
I just want to say thank you to the Richfield Foundation. One of the great things about sitting on that board, and I know our city manager does too, is giving away the grant dollars. That is the most fun to give money to such deserving operations, and every year, we have more asks than we have money to give. So we had that great wine event and raised a lot of dollars, and next year, we'll be giving away more, we hope. And your dollars go far in your community, so I just want to say thank you to that. That is the greatest thing that I think really lives in my day, and everybody, almost everybody who can shows up at that meeting, because everybody wants to see who gets the grants, and everybody wants to talk about the great things in Richfield. So I want to thank all those recipients, too, and all those great organizations that do so much for Richfield. And thank you, Chair, for being here. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to say that Steve Quam certainly looked really dapper in his beautiful new tie.
Thank you, everyone. That was a great presentation. At this time, we have a very long consent calendar. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Yeah, this is the one consent calendar during the course of the year that I dread, because I'll probably make mistakes as I'm stumbling through it. The consent calendar for those in the audience contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further council action on those items will be necessary. Tonight, we have so many consent items, I didn't count them offhand, but let's just start off with Item A. Consideration of the Approval of a Resolution Calling for a Public Hearing on Proposed Property Tax Abatements for the City of Richfield's Ice Arena Project. Item B is Consideration of the Approval of a Resolution Authorizing City Staff to Incur Costs for Proposed Improvements at the City's Ice Arena. Item C is Consideration of the Approval of a Resolution Allowing an Amendment to the City's Regulatory Agreement Related to the Redemption and Prepayment of the City's $10,400,000 Variable Rate Demand Multifamily Housing Revenue Bonds, or the Woodlake Richfield Department's LLC Project Series 2011. Item D is Consideration of the Approval of the Quotes, Tabulation, and Award of Contract to All Metro Excavating Incorporated for the Richfield Parkway (that's the 17th Avenue) Home Demolitions in the Amount of $115,000. Item E is Consideration of the Approval of the Bid, Minutes, Tabulation, and Award of Contract to Maleka Spreading LLC for Lime Residual Disposal for a Two-Year Period, 2014-2015, in the Amount of $58,050 per year, or $116,100 for two years. Item F is Consideration of the Approval of a Resolution Requesting the State Aid Design Element Variants from the Minnesota Department of Transportation for the Richfield Parkway Project. Item G, Consideration of the Approval of Resolution Authorizing the City of Richfield to Participate in the Minnesota Water Agency Response Network, a Mutual Aid Agency created to allow city utilities to assist each other in the case of an emergency. Next, we have Item H. Consideration of the Approval of Resolution Authorizing the Acceptance of the Community's Transformation Grant Agreement between the City of Richfield and the City of Bloomington. Item I, Consideration of the Approval of a Resolution Authorizing the Acceptance of Monetary Support for the Public Safety Police for Safety Day and Night to Unite and Unsolicited from the Richfield American Legion Unit Number 435. Item J is Consideration of the Approval of the 2014 Contract with the City of Bloomington Using Federal Grant Funds to Provide Services in the Area of Public Health Emergency Preparedness, Bioterrorism, and the Development of Response System. Item K is Consideration of the Approval of the Continuation of the Agreement with the City of Bloomington for the Provision of Public Health Services for the City of Richfield for 2014. Item L is Consideration of the Approval of the 2014 Renewal of the Named Business Licenses for the On-Sale and Off-Sale 3.2 Malt Liquor License Establishments, Taxi Companies, and Rental Trailers and Trucks Doing Business in Richfield. And now I'll read off all of the license applicants. License to Sell 32% Malt Liquor, Aldi Foods Off-Sale, Champs at the Ice Arena Location On-Sale, Devani's On-Sale, El Jalapeno Off-Sale, Portland Food Market Off-Sale, RBF Corporation of Wisconsin, or Rainbow Foods, Off-Sale, Richfield U.S. Gas Station at 67th and Penn Off-Sale, Sandy's Tavern On-Sale, SuperAmerica 4186 Off-Sale, SuperAmerica 4188 Off-Sale, SuperAmerica 4191 Off-Sale, and SuperAmerica 4615 Off-Sale, Target Corporation Off-Sale, Vena Restaurant On-Sale. License to Operate in Richfield. A New Taxi and Limousine Service, six vehicles. Airport Taxi, six vehicles. American Travel, six vehicles. Continental Taxi LLC, five vehicles. Gold Star Taxi, twenty vehicles. Latino Americano Express, Express Taxi, seven vehicles. Latino Express, six vehicles. Suburban Taxi, five vehicles. Ten-Ten Taxi, ten vehicles. Twin Cities Airport Taxi, five vehicles. White Star Taxi, three vehicles. And finally, Paul's Rental and Sales, Trailer and Truck Rental. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
Second.
You can start with the public hearings.
Alrighty. This is a public hearing for consideration of the renewal of 2014 Pawn Broker and Secondhand Goods Dealers licenses for Metro Pawn and Gun Incorporated located at 7529 Lindell Avenue South, and I wanted to do both of them separately, but on November the 4th, 2013, the city received the application materials for the renewal of Pawn Broker and Secondhand Goods Dealer licenses for Metro Pawn and Gun Incorporated. All the required information and documents have been provided. All license fees have been received. So the applicant has satisfied the following requirements for issuance of a license. The required license fees have been paid. Real estate taxes are not delinquent. The $5,000 bond has been submitted. Environmental health staff has received no complaints regarding Metro Pawn and Gun in the previous year. And public safety has completed their background investigation, and the results are summarized in this report. And their license will expire December the 31st of 2013, so therefore, this is a public hearing if anyone wishes to testify.
Anyone like to come forward to testify in regards to this? Please come up and state your name and address.
My name is Mark Nichols. I'm the applicant here, and I'd just like to step forward annually. This is the kind of license that sometimes generates questions on the part of the mayor or the council, and I'd just like to be available, answer them. I don't really have a statement to make, but I would be happy to answer any questions anyone has that have not been satisfactorily answered. If not, I'll sit back down.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Well, I know I've been to your shop.
Well, thank you.
One time I took my, I have a holster and two six shooters. I mean, these are replicas, okay? And I took them in there, and we had a nice discussion about them, and you were very, very courteous, so I appreciated it. It's a nice shop, too.
Thank you very much.
You know, it's a good place to go just to kind of browse. You never know, you might need something.
Thank you.
So with that, I.
Is there anybody else who would like to step forward? The public hearing is still open? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Second. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Public hearing is closed.
So I move, we approve the renewal of the 2014 Pawn Broker and Secondhand Goods Dealer License for Metro Pawn and Gun Incorporated, 7529 Lindell Avenue South.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And the second one is another public hearing, and this one is for AV's Pawn and Jewelry at 6414 Niclet Avenue South, and it is another public hearing, and the same set of criteria that applied to the first shop applies to this, and they have met all the requirements as required by Richfield's Public Safety Department.
So the public hearing is open. Would anyone like to come forward to speak?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I myself, like Mark, Mr. Nichols, I'm the owner. My name's Andy Strauss. I can field questions if anyone has any questions.
It's nice that you come.
And I've also been to your shop.
You've got a lot of guns.
No, no, no. This time I did purchase a little cartridge for Playstation.
Sure.
Playstation 3, so, and I liked your shop also.
Thank you.
So, anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to come forward? I'd entertain a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Public hearing is closed.
So I move that we approve the renewal of the 2014 Pawn Broker and Secondhand Goods Dealer License for University Cash Company Incorporated, AV's Pawn and Jewelry, 6414 Niclet Avenue South.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually have two items on this, and they are both similar, so the agenda item is the first request of two of renewals of club on-sale and Sunday liquor sales. If the council does not object, we'd like to hold both of them at the same time, if that works for you.
Aye.
The two items under consideration is a public hearing for the consideration of renewal of the 2014 Club On-Sale and Sunday Liquor License for Fred Babcock Post Number 555, Inc. Doing Businesses, Four Nickels Food and Drink, 6715 Lakeshore Drive. And the second one is a public hearing for the consideration of renewal of the 2014 Club On-Sale and Sunday Liquor License for the Minneapolis-Richfield American Legion Post, 435, located at 6501 Portland Avenue South. As far as the reference, they have met all the requirements needed, have completed the public safety background check. As far as the accountant statement, this statement covers, now I'm speaking of the VFW on this one, that October through September, it indicated that the food sales accounted for 45.7% of the total sales, while the liquor accounted for 54.3. Because they're a club, they're exempted from meeting the more than 50% requirement. That's the oddity that we'll hear tonight with a couple of them. And then, as far as the American Legion for the same, they accounted for only 23.7% of the total sales, while 67.3% was for liquor. And again, they are exempted because they are a veterans' club. And they have, like stated before, both agencies have met all the requirements as far as taxes, bonding, the curtain, everything, and they have passed the public safety background investigation. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we open the public hearing for both these events.
Okay, the public hearing is open. Would anyone like just to come forward? Anyone? Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. The public hearing is closed.
Hey, Madam Mayor, then I'll make a recommendation that we approve the renewal of the 2014 Club On-Sale and Sunday Liquor License for the Fred Babcock VFW Post Number 555, Inc. Doing Businesses, Four Nickels Food and Drink, 6715 Lakeshore Drive. And that we also approve the renewal of the 2014 Club On-Sale and Sunday Liquor License for Minneapolis-Richfield American Legion Post, 435, located at 6501 Portland Avenue South.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mayor, I'd also like to say that I've eaten and drank in both. Great establishments.
You've been everywhere.
Yes.
May I also say, though, that, you know, I should look over the license and look over the incidents and everything. These restaurants and everything, we've had a really good year, and I want to thank it, because I know it's hard for restaurants sometimes to have to take on some tough issues or sometimes, or some unruly clients, and to also make sure that they don't serve the underage, and they've done a really, we've had a really good year. I just want to thank our businesses for caring about our community, so.
And thanks, too, to the public safety. I think they certainly want to make sure that our businesses succeed and do a good job of working with them.
Yeah, they do. Councilmember Elliott, number seven.
Thank you, Your Honor. Number seven involves public hearings for the consideration of the renewal of 2014 On-Sale Wine and 3.2% Malt Liquor licenses for several establishments in Richfield, and subject to the approval of the council, I will have a single open meeting for all of them. The institutions themselves include Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado, LLC, DBA Chipotle Mexican Grill, 7644 Lindell Avenue South, Thompson's Fireside Pizza, Inc., DBA Fireside Pizza, 6736 Penn Avenue, Kang's Red Pepper, Inc., DBA Red Pepper Chinese Restaurant, 2910 West 66th Street, Patrick's French Bakery, Inc., DBA Patrick's Bakery and Cafe, 2928 West 66th Street, The Noodle Shop Company Colorado, Inc., DBA Noodles and Company, 7630 Lindell Avenue, The Noodle Shop Company Colorado, Inc., DBA Noodles and Company, 1732 East 66th Street, John E. Powers and Associate, Inc., DBA Larriett Lanes, 6320 Penn Avenue, and Joyce Pataia Thai Restaurant, LLC, DBA Joyce Pataia Thai Restaurant, 7545 Lindell. I would suggest in going through the staff reports that the city has received the application materials for the renewal of each of these establishments. All required information and documents have been provided. All licensing fees have been received. Similarly, the public safety background investigation has been completed on all the establishments. The results of the investigations are summarized in an attachment to this report, which I'm not going to read, but none of the information in the report shows any cause for recommending denial of the requested licenses asked for by the eight individual establishments. With that being said, at this time, I would open the public hearing and ask for any comments anyone may have in regards to any of these establishments. Please make sure that if you're going to speak, you identify which liquor license you're speaking to. Thank you.
The public hearing is open. Would anyone like to step forward? Anyone? Public hearing is open.
Move to close.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. The public hearing is closed. Councilmember.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I would move to approve the renewal of the 2014 On-Sale Wine and 3.2% Malt Liquor License for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado, DBA Chipotle Mexican Grill, 7644 Lindell Avenue South.
Second.
Do you want to do a mute step?
I'll do all, as long as there was no comments, I'll just do them all. Second, I would move to approve the renewal of the 2014 On-Sale Wine and 3.2% Malt Liquor Licenses for Thompson's Fireside Pizza, DBA Fireside Pizza. Three, I'd move to approve the renewal of the 2014 On-Sale Wine and 3.2% Malt Liquor License for Kang's Red Pepper, Inc., DBA Red Pepper Chinese Restaurant. Next, I'd move to approve the renewal of the 2014 On-Sale Wine and 3.2% Malt Liquor License for Patrick's French Bakery, DBA Patrick's Bakery and Cafe. I move the approval of the renewal of the 2014 On-Sale Wine and 3.2% Malt Liquor Licenses for The Noodle Shop Company Colorado, Inc., DBA Noodles and Company, 7630 Lindell Avenue South. And also move the approval of the 2014 On-Sale Wine and 3.2% Malt Liquor License for The Noodle Shop Company Colorado, DBA Noodles and Company, 1732 East 66th Street. Move the approval and renewal of the 2014 On-Sale. Move the approval and renewal of the 2014 on-sale wine and 3.2% malt liquor license for John E. Powers and Associates, Inc., DBA Lariat Lanes. And move the, and approve the renewal of the 2014 on-sale wine and 3.2% malt liquor license for Joyce's Pataya Thai Restaurant, LLC, DBA Joyce's Pataya Thai Restaurant.
Second. Nicely done.
Same second, yeah.
Any discussion?
Well, I just want to say that.
Have you eaten at all of them?
That I've eaten at all of them, except one, and that's because I enjoyed the Mexican cooking at 6908 Fifth Avenue South.
Oh, your house.
My house.
Any other discussion? We'll be all over for dinner Friday. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Sandal.
Well, that was a hard act to follow, but I have to try.
You did well.
This will also be a public hearing for consideration of the renewal of the 2014 on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses with optional 2:00 AM closing for some of the restaurants. The first one we have in front of us is The Frenchman's 1400 East 66th Street, which does have an optional 2:00 AM closing. We have Financial Guidance, Inc., Doing Business as Four Points by Sheridan, located at 7745 Lindell. The Pizon Incorporated, Doing Business as Con's Mongolian Barbecue, located at 500 East 78th Street. Wiltshire Restaurants, LLC, Doing Business as Houlihan's Restaurant and Bar, at 6601 Lindell, and that does include outside service. We have Don Pablo's Operating LLC, Doing Business as Don Pablo's, at 980 West 78th Street. Champs Operating Corporation, Doing Business as Champs Americana, 790 West 66th Street, which includes optional 2:00 AM closing. And Pizza Luce, Roman numeral seven, Inc., Doing Business as Pizza Luce, 800 West 66th Street, which includes outside service and optional 2:00 AM closings. And all of these restaurants have submitted their applications, filed all of their insurance information, paid all their taxes, their rent is current, they've paid any required license fees, they have proof of liquor liability insurance. They've also prepared an accountant's statement and provided it to the, to the police department for the percentage of what they sell in the way of food versus what they sell in the way of alcohol. And all of them meet the requirements, which do require that at least 50% of the restaurant's net, I don't know if it's net or gross, total sales is food, as opposed to alcohol. And they have passed any environmental requirements from the Public Health Department. And this is true of every single restaurant that we read. We were also provided with information about the police calls, public safety contacts for all of them. Some have, there are some criminal contacts, and sometimes it's an alarm call. And also non-criminal contacts, including assists, traffic issues, inspections, licensing, medical and fire emergencies. And all of them meet the, are satisfactory as far as the police and fire department are concerned. So, with that, we can have our public hearing.
The public hearing is open. Would anyone like to come forward from any of these establishments or to talk about this? The public hearing is open.
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one item I'd like to mention.
Yes.
I found out Frenchman's is 80 years old this year.
Oh, wow.
So, we have an old establishment in our city.
Besides Sanders, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I just want to add ditto.
Eighty.
To all my other comments.
You've been there that long, no?
Yeah, I've lived here for a long time.
Okay, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is closed. Councilmember?
And with that, I will move that we approve all of those that I previously read. Would council like me to reread them, or can we just?
Can just read the names.
Refer back. I'll read the names, that's fine. The Frenchman's Financial Guidance, Doing Business as Four Points by Sheridan, Pizon Incorporated, Doing Business as Con's Mongolian Barbecue, Wiltshire Restaurants, LLC, Doing Business as Houlihan's Restaurant and Bar, Don Pablo's Operating LLC, Doing Business as Don Pablo's, Champs Operating Corporation, Doing Business as Champs Americana, and Pizza Luce, Roman numeral seven, Inc., Doing Business as Pizza Luce.
A second. Any other discussion?
I would like to report that I have also eaten at all of these establishments. Multiple times. And I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to all of them that include outside dining.
Oh, isn't that nice?
My favorite. Bless you, and I hope the rest of you consider it.
And we'll do more, hopefully.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I mean, I have the, the next item. The next item is a public hearing in consideration of a second reading of a proposed ordinance adopting the 77th Street Underpass Official Map. The adoption of the official right-of-way, official map for the city area in which the 77th Street Underpass would be constructed protects the city and the state from escalating costs associated with the purchase of property at a later date when the road improvement is made, restricting the ability of the landowners to construct within the identified area. The official map will also allow the city to seek additional funding sources to expedite construction. The right-of-way acquisition loan fund, called RALF, is one such funding source that the city has used in the past. The fund is administered by the Metropolitan Council and is designed to reserve right-of-way for road expansion in areas where the cost of the land is escalating and the land acquisition is critical to completing the project. To request use of the interstate-free RALF funds, the city must first adopt an official right-of-way map for the 77th Street Underpass project. And does staff have any additions that they'd like to?
Well, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I do. There was a late email that came in that I want to bring to the council's attention. I passed out copies. I guess there was two emails. I'd like you maybe to take a look at the second one that came in late this afternoon from a Judy Linville. They're not able to come, but I want to make sure that, that you understand they had this comment. And I'll, if you don't mind, I'll just read it, it's not too long.
Certainly.
"We are in receipt of your letter dated November 18th notifying us of a public hearing on December 10. We currently have no one in that area that can attend the hearing and represent our interests. Your proposed acquisition map appears to take our motel property, and it certainly does. This Motel 6 is currently a very productive motel for us, and we do not want to lose it. Since this road construction project has not been adopted by city council ordinance, we want to take this opportunity to appeal to you to move the right-of-way to an area that will miss the Motel 6 property and place it outside the proposed acquisition boundaries. The property is scheduled for remodel in 2015, and I see that according to your letter, a permit to make renovations would be denied. The fact that we had intentions of making major improvements to the property indicates that we had planned to keep the prop, keep operating this property. And then, please accept this letter as an objection to the city of acquiring the motel at this time." And I'd like to point out, of course, that we're not acquiring at this time. We're identifying and saying that it is in line with this proposed project. And as, as the council letter pointed out, it gives us, does two things. One, it allows us to get funding through the Met Council through the, the RALF program. And also formally puts them on notice that if they, this is primarily designed that if somebody puts in, comes in and wants to put a new whole structure, a new whole kind of thing, and it isn't really targeting the remodeling or the kind of maintenance things that, that normally would occur with a property. But if they come in for a building permit and, and begin, there's a, the council, they can appeal to the council for this building permit, and the council can allow it to proceed if they, if they see fit. But this is, this is, all of this is up to the council discretion. And we're bringing this before you because it does open a funding opportunity through this RALF funds. And in the past, the city has used the RALF funds actually quite frequently along 494. For example, at the Penn Avenue Bridge Project, the land that's in front of Best Buy between the 494 and, and Best Buy today was purchased using RALF funds and is, and is now being used for a park and ride. And there's other places along 77th Street that use the RALF funds. So, with that, I guess that's, that's the extent of my comments.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, Your Honor, I think that I'd be really interested in making sure we keep the equities balanced on this. I, I think the right-of-way is a benefit, and we, and we need to do it. Accordingly, though, I want to make sure that, that the owners of Motel 6, if they want to do the renovations, I certainly want to ensure that they keep the property up and improve it. And so, you know, it's not before us or anything, but I'd strongly suggest that we all keep in the back of our mind that they're concerned about doing those renovations in 2015. And, and we remember that when that vote, if it does come up before us in regards to what we're doing here tonight.
Well, and what we are in the bounding bill for this next year, so we will know where funds are going.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And I'm not sure we have the opportunity to reroute this significantly as a plan for costs.
I'm not asking about rerouting. I'm just saying that, that we are still looking at a fairly long timeline.
Yeah.
And if they want to improve that property in 2015, let's make sure we give them every consideration to do that.
Yep, and also.
And to benefit from them, and the community will benefit also. That's all I'm saying.
And if, information, if we do what the timeline is, so that they also have that. This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to come forward? Please.
My name is George Puduklam. I own two properties in the area. One is at 7600 Cedar Avenue. The other one is 7601 Eighteenth Avenue. I'm confused by this. I don't, I do not know what's the impact of this, this ordinance on my property. I had been owning this property for the last eight years. I have invested a significant amount of money in developing the property and keeping, keeping them in good condition. But I would like to sell my property in the next year or so, as I'm getting up in age myself. And managing rental property is not an easy task. However, I cannot afford to lose my investment. So, I would like to understand what would be the impact of this ordinance on my property and my ability to sell to some potential buyers in the year or two.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a question I would, I'd ask you to address with staff. So, thank you for coming to the public hearing. And would staff please talk to him about the right-of-way?
Sure, we'd be happy to do that, just very briefly, that if the sale occurs in the future, the city may be interested in purchasing that property and then buy from whoever, whoever the owner is at that time. And, and I think we always, we always pay at fair market value, at least fair market value at the time for the sale of something, you know, if the purchase is needed.
My concern is that if the, if there's a chance that the city may be buying, taking part of the land, not the whole property, I don't think anybody would be interested in buying the property from me. That's my concern. I'm, for example, when, by reviewing the map for the 7600 Cedar Avenue property will be significantly, significantly impacted by this ordinance because the city may be taking some or most of the land.
Right.
So, I am, I'm really trying to understand what would be the impact.
Well, we'd, I'd be happy to talk to you about this afterwards, but I, my understanding is it would, the part, the parcels affected are all total takes. So, there, there would not be a partial take, it would be a total take.
So, they would be buying the entire property.
Oh, the entire property would go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to come forward and speak on this, the right-of-way? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Fitz Henry. You have.
I'm sorry, aren't we moving the motion?
We gotta move the item. We close the hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
We just, it was just a public hearing in consideration of a second reading of a proposed ordinance.
I'm sorry, it looks like, oh, approve the second.
Approve the second reading. I can, I can ask for a motion to approve the second reading of the attached ordinance amendment to Richfield City Code, Section 551 zoning official map to include subsection 55.02, 77th Street Underpass.
So moved.
All right, second. Discussion?
Well, I'd like to just, I, I think if people in the audience are listening, we're giving you a heads up, really, is what we're doing, is letting you know what our intent is. If you look at the alignment of what's on the other side on the airport property, I, I agree with your map that this has to be done, you know? And so, pay attention to the map. If you own properties there, pay attention to what's happening with the bridge underneath.
If you're in that area.
Right, and, and just, it's a heads up to let you know. We're being kind to you to let you know that, that is our intent way ahead of time. I'm not sure if that'll be done in the near future or not, but we're at least giving you a good heads up.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could.
Please, please.
You know, we will be coming back to you when we start to do some more preliminary drawings on this. And if there's a way that some of this can be adjusted and any of these properties not affected, we could, we can amend this. And, and there might be a reason, too, if we change that alignment slightly. But certainly not, not to the extent, for example, Motel 6 is, you can see where that lines up.
No.
Some of these ones that were on the edges, we made sure we took enough that would take in all of the alternatives that are being considered at this time.
Thank you, appreciate that from staff. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This will be a, a public hearings in consideration of second readings of proposed ordinances modifying the electric and gas franchise fees. I'm not sure, do we want to conduct both of these at the same time like we did the rest? And we'll see if anybody's got an objection. They can move forward and talk to us. So, what I'll do is, the, what it's all about is, we had established franchise fees for both Excel Energy, known as Northern State's Power, and CenterPoint for providing gas services to the city. The recommendation to increase franchise fees for Richfield residents and businesses came after much deliberation. In response to the city goal setting, number 29 capital investment plans, the staff recommended an accelerated mill and overlay program. This need was discussed at May 14th, 2013 work session, and further details were provided at the September 10th, 2013 work session. Payment options were given to the city council at October 8th, 2013 work sessions. And finally, the first reading at the November 12th, 2013 council meeting. We have a lot below that talks about the accelerated repair we're going to do in the city and that. But I thought we'll go ahead and open the public meeting and see if we have any comments, see if we have to discuss it.
The public, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward to speak about the franchise fees? Anyone? I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make the motion that, and then that we approve the second reading of the attached ordinance modifying the electric, electric franchise fee of Northern State's Power, Doing Business as Excel Energy, for providing electrical service within the city of Richfield. And we approve the second reading of the attached ordinance modifying the gas franchise fees on CenterPoint Energy for providing gas services within the city of Richfield. And approve the attached resolutions authorized summary publication of both ordinances. Now, do I have to mention that we did on the ordinance, and this is for just the electrical, am I correct?
So, change?
Your members of the council, if I could make a brief explanation. Yes, Excel Energy recommended that we make, modify the ordinance slightly, and the city attorney has reviewed it and gone along with it. And highlighted in yellow is the paragraph affected, and underlined is the words that are affected. And, and so, if you would just substitute that resolution that was the one attached to the letter.
And for the record, I might as well go ahead and read that. It's sub four under surcharges. The city recognizes that the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission and the changes may allow, when it did say allow before, so now it says they may allow the utility company to add surcharge to customer rates to reimburse such utility company for the cost of the fee, and that Excel Energy will surcharge its customers in the city the amount of the fee.
Please.
I think everyone in the city probably got a postcard just recently in the mail that talked about better roads, better Richfield. And this is what it's all about. The purpose of the franchise fees, the increases, is to cover improvement, or re, give it to me again. It's mill and overlay. It's substantial improvement to the city of Richfield's roads so that we can preserve them at a reduced cost. If we ignore them and do nothing, and we don't have it, and we, we need a source of money to do it. And we'd prefer not to put a special assessment for the roadway in front of your house on each individual home. This way, we can cover it over time. It will be paid for by the franchise fee increase, and we'll be able to get the streets done in six years. Is that what it is? So, that we will have our streets in a very good condition, which will, in the long run, save the taxpayers money.
Yes, this is a very good thing, and I know that it's a lot to bite off, but there isn't a city that isn't having to deal with this. And some of them are assessing these homes right out in front, and that's substantial.
If you think anybody that's paid attention to the Star Tribune the last couple of months, there's been some real horror stories on some communities that are second, third ring suburbs, that are 10-year streets that are falling apart. So, I think two things. The, the method that, that our public's work has been working our streets. So I think two things, the, the, the method that, that our public's work has been working our streets and improving them has been wonderful. And I think this, this is in line with, I think I'd mentioned the call I got in regards to the franchise fees. And, and I think that deferring pain doesn't eliminate it, it, it just makes it worse. So, so I understand the, the problems it is in having these franchise fees, but to defer it is just gonna cause that much more pain. Because it's just gonna, it's gonna much steeper hit that everybody's gonna have to take.
And everybody drives the roads somewhere sometime around. You visit friends, you go through all the roads, we gotta fix them all.
Or you have delivery trucks driving the roads to your house.
That's right. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, councilmember Elliott.
Thank you, your honor. This is a public hearing and second reading for a transitory ordinance vacating a street right-of-way easement adjacent to and within the boundaries of sixty-four oh one Penn Avenue, fire station number two. Necessary right-of-way shall be reserved through the plating of the property and an easement is no longer necessary. Executive summary indicates that as part of the fire station to remodel, the city has undertaken the plating of the property. This process not only provides the city with a current survey of its land, but also affords the city the opportunity to review all property title work. There exists a right-of-way easement along Penn Avenue that will become redundant with the filling of, with the filing of the plat and therefore should be vacated. There's also an easement for street purposes along the northern fifty feet of the property. This easement goes through the existing building and should also be vacated. Policy considerations include that the council has the authority to buy ordinance to vacate a street, alley, public grounds or part thereof. On its own motion or upon the petition of the owners of half of the land abutting, the street, alley, public grounds or part thereof to be vacated. The city owns more than half of the abutting land. No vacation may be made unless it appears in the interest of the public to do so. The existing right-of-way easement will no longer be necessary upon adoption of the plat for sixty-four oh one Penn. And it is good policy to remove easements or other property encumbrances that are no longer necessary. With that being said, at this time, I would move that we open the public hearing.
This is a public hearing, would anyone like to come forward? Anyone, this is a public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
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 The public hearing is closed.
At this time, your honor, I'd move to approve the attached transitory ordinance vacating a right-of-way easement at sixty-four oh one Penn Avenue South.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Sandel?
This is item number twelve. It's a request to increase allowable restaurant space at Lindell Gardens redevelopment site at sixty-three thirty and sixty-four hundred Lindell Avenue from twenty-six hundred square feet to ten thousand square feet. And the Cornerstone Group owner and developer of the planned Lindell Gardens development is requesting an increase in the allowable restaurant space at the site. The approved plans currently include a hundred and fifty-one unit apartment and eleven thousand six hundred square feet of retail space, of which twenty-six hundred square feet was requested for restaurant use. The development will share parking with the adjacent twenty-five thousand square foot Lakewins Co-op. And the Cornerstone Group requested an amendment to the approved planned unit development that would allow up to ten thousand square feet of restaurant space. They submitted an updated parking analysis and then I believe staff analysis, staff also reviewed the parking analysis based on code requirements. And the concern that was reported by staff is that the success of recent developments within the city has exceeded estimates and expectations for parking. And so result has some concerns for the policymakers and have heard from residents about concerns of parking availability and spillover. And so the staff analyzed the parking based on a scenario in which a seven thousand square feet would be available for restaurant space and requested that the applicant do the same. In this scenario, neither the consultant nor staff estimate that non-event parking demands will exceed ninety percent of capacity. And staff has recommended a maximum of seven thousand square feet for restaurant space. And a stipulation allowing the community development director to consider and approve at his discretion, take out only food and beverage services in the remaining space. The director's decision would be made by evaluating the particulars of the proposed use and including the type of food and beverage proposed, anticipated peak demand times and other relevant factors. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Stark if he wishes to report. I was not at the, at the public meeting that was held by the planning commission and give us a little more input if you would.
Well, I wasn't there either, I'm sorry to report. I, I can't tell you what, you know, what I learned and that is that the planning commission did recommend approval at the ten, at the seven thousand level. And I, I received an inquiry from a council member asking really what is, what does seven thousand square feet of restaurant look like? And just to put it in context, the, the restaurant that used to be called the Eastern Buffet, that's now El Tejeban, in, in the Richfield Chops is forty-two hundred square feet. The Pizza Luce is seven thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet. So that gives you a little bit of an idea of what we're talking about. You know, I don't wanna speak for the applicant, but my understanding is that with the seven thousand square feet, it would probably be one of two things. It would either be a single seventy-five hundred square foot user or a, like a five thousand square foot user with a twenty-five hundred square foot, like coffee kind of use.
If I may. I wasn't at it, I watched it on TV and I'm sure that Beth will correct me, but it was my understanding that the ten thousand feet was, was to have the opportunity to entertain other, other food establishments that, and the type that would, you know, a yogurt shop. So all those would require that type of thing. But, and, and we'll talk about it when you come up, Beth, but the concern I had is, is trying to, to match that with the vision we've had for the last year, eighteen months on what was gonna go into that additional eleven thousand. So I understand that asking for that gives you the opportunity to be flexible at the same time. It was my understanding there were gonna be some fairly unique shops and everything in there that would, would be more than food. So I, I'm sure you'll address that and, and I understand that, that, I think you'd indicated that you're discussing lease with, with someone that wanted about five thousand fifty, five hundred square feet of that space. And then the adjacent or the rest was to perhaps have a coffee shop or something. So I, like I said, I know you're gonna explain that a little bit more, but at the same time, like I said, my concern is, is what was originally proposed or what the vision was for that eleven thousand end space and, and what direction you're, you're moving now. So I, I wanted to just put that out rather than interrupt you once you get started, so.
And maybe we can have.
Yes, well, please, Beth, Beth is here from Cornerstone, please come up and, and listen to your comments for sure.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you again for having me here tonight. I think I was the only one at the planning commission meeting that night, it was a quick, quiet night, we were the only thing on the agenda. So councilmember Elliott, you are exactly correct that it is not our intention to fill the entire ten thousand square feet with restaurant. It really is more a preservation of our ability to negotiate and to talk to restaurants. Currently, we are not looking at filling ten thousand square feet with restaurant. But under the, the way that the structure of the parking agreement is organized, restaurants are not differentiated by type. So a coffee shop is considered the same way that a yogurt shop and ice cream shop is considered. Even though we know the turnover rate for ice cream or coffee happen at different times of day and with a different capacity than a seated restaurant. So really, we are talking to someone currently and that we're, we're pretty serious with, they're starting to look at design work and moving forward. And they are looking at a concept that would be somewhere in the four to five thousand square foot range. And they may or may not do a second restaurant that's a coffee shop or they, we may go out to a separate coffee shop for that. So those two uses paired together would be close to the seven thousand square feet. And we did wanna still preserve some ability to attract ice cream into the mix. And that would still leave three thousand square feet for other local, we're really looking for local businesses. And likely, we will have some sort of co-working office space there that will include potentially gallery space as well. And some really fun stuff that I'm not quite ready to talk to you about tonight, but we'll be coming back as soon as we get the restaurant piece worked out to give you an update. So you are correct that we don't envision this having ten thousand square feet of restaurant. The request was for the full amount so that we would not have to continue to change our PUD if the number didn't come in exactly at seven thousand. Or it was really to give us flexibility. But in reviewing it with staff, I think that we're pretty comfortable with the recommendation of planning commission and we feel like that's a good compromise. So if that's, if you are able to support that decision, we, we feel like we've done good work with staff to come to a decision that, to a number that we can agree upon.
That's nice, please.
I would just add, in terms of the flexibility, that if, I don't know the exact numbers off, just off my head, but in the ordinance, there can be an amended PUD, that's amended at the staff level for, for small changes. I believe the change in square footage is, is five percent. So if the, if you were to approve seven thousand square feet tonight and it were to go up, you know, as much as five percent, staff can weigh the, the issues there and could possibly grant an approval for small changes like that. If, as Beth said, their concern is, you know, these, this getting into exact numbers.
Councilmember Elliott.
And, and I think that I, I, you know, I think that staff has a better handle on, on the parking in terms of if there's additional needed. And I will tell you though, that, that when you talk about Pizza Luce running about seven thousand seventy-five hundred square feet, I, I've got a comfort level at four to five thousand square feet with, with which I perceive to be an enormous parking problem over there. If you get seven thousand square feet at the same success rate as Pizza Luce has, you guys aren't gonna be able to do it. The park, you're gonna be taking that outlot and paving that over and turn it into valet parking because there's no way that people are gonna park on, on the south side and, and come back around to, to something that's crowded like that. So I, I, I hope that it's four and five thousand square feet, super successful and that, that ninety percent of the parking lot, which I think is saturation point is, you know, hits it every time because that means everybody's doing well. But I shudder to think of, of a success rate of Pizza Luce in seven thousand square feet over there because we're gonna have some real problems.
I'd walk over.
Yeah.
Well, there, yeah, there's a lot of us that would, but, but there's a lot of people that don't walk anymore, so that's, that's the problem.
And nothing's finalized yet, but like I said, the restaurant that we're talking to is not planning a seven thousand square foot restaurant. So the number was determined by looking at the shape of the building, the way that other stalls might come in, the way that it would likely divide up, how much we think one restaurant will take plus adding. And considering that coffee has to be included in this as well. And we know that coffee's peak demand is at a completely different hour than restaurant peak demand and those two uses really can coexist together, so.
Understood.
Okay, alright, thank you. Okay, okay, alright.
With that, I will move that we approve the resolution constituting an amendment to the planned unit development, conditional use permit and final development plan for sixty-three thirty and sixty-four hundred Lindell Avenue to allow up to seven thousand square feet of restaurant space.
A second. Any further discussion? I wanna thank Cornerstone for being here, thank you for the representative. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
If I can make a comment, having been around for a long time, I can remember when the, the restaurant at sixty-sixth and Niklet went in, the buffet. Old Country Buffet and there were parking all over the place, it was the most popular place to be and the neighbors were all upset because of the parking. And it's no longer such a big issue. So things do change over time, so.
And the next item is consideration of resolution approving the twenty thirteen revised twenty fourteen proposed budget, tax levy and related resolutions. And I believe Commissioner Myron Franz is actually out in the lobby, if we would please, he said he was coming by if he would. Someone would ask him to step in and let him know that this item is. Myron Franz is Department of Revenue?
Yeah, okay.
That was the letter we got?
Yes, that's the letter you got.
They were enjoying our furniture out there.
Yeah, they were too tired.
Well, here are local hot topics.
Speak well of the excitement of city council generation.
Well, there was, there was a lot of reading.
He was watching it on TV out there, wasn't he?
Yeah, he was, he was watching, oh, he bought some of it, I wonder if he brought this stool? Did you bring this stool? Oh, you brought this stool. Okay, alright, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a reading and then I'm gonna introduce you, please take a seat right up here front and we'll, we'll bring you over the podium in a moment. On September tenth, two thousand thirteen, the city council approved and certified a preliminary tax levy of eighteen million twelve thousand three hundred and three dollars to Hennepin County. The final tax levy must now be considered and approved by the city council. Final levy may be less, but may not be greater than the preliminary levy amount. Taxpayers have received individual parcels, specific tax notices in anticipation of the truth and taxation meeting, hearing. The city of Richfield has conducted and closed its twenty thirteen truth and taxation hearing on December third, two thousand thirteen. During the course of the public hearing, there was an opportunity for testimony for the public, general public. Information was also presented to the staff regarding the proposed levy and budget. No official city council action to act on the levy was permissible on that day, it was a public hearing. Since the initial publication of the twenty fourteen city Richfield proposed budget document, there has been one change of note. The original twenty fourteen general fund budget approved by the city council September has been increased to the, in the public work street division budget by four hundred and eight thousand dollars to account for the residential street concrete work in two thousand fourteen in preparation for the planned mill and overlay of all residential streets beginning in two thousand fifteen. Also included for consideration are salary increases for the non-representative employee pay plans, the proposed increase of two point two-five percent increase for the management and general service pay plans and one percent for the specialized pay plan that increase are, are effective the first pay period during the January two thousand fourteen. So at, at this time too, I had, had received a call from Commissioner of the Department of Revenue, Myron Franz, whom I have served with on the local government aid task force. We changed and updated that local government aid formula significantly and it was very advantageous for the city of Richfield. I wanna, I wanna thank all the staff, your staff was very influential in that. I wanna thank the current administration that also supports cities and believes in sustaining the long-term viability of local government aid. And to that, I wanna thank you and thank you for offering to come here tonight when I spoke with you, that was very kind of you. And I just wanna say that we also had received a memo outlining the possibility of actually going a bit lower. And one of the conversations was about how do we preserve the long-term liability of having LGAs a city and make sure that we're using it appropriately. However, I believe that the city uses a great deal of our local government aid, we did this year. We have a lot of things before us, so there is a balancing act here that we're trying to play when we talked about this meeting. One of the things we got in the memo was the expected road improvements of thirty-one million coming down, the long-term planning as we look forward. And I had that conversation also with Commissioner Franz about the fact of what, and all cities are in the same boat of this. But we do have an opportunity to support a possible lowering of the general fund budget. It could be done tonight, an increase of fifty thousand dollars in the tax levy would bring it down to one point two-two percent. If the LGA was increased to a hundred thousand dollars to match the levy, we could bring it down to point nine-three percent. And I know that we'll be going back to the legislature and there'll probably be conversation again on LGA. So with that, I'd like to give Commissioner Franz an opportunity to, to talk about all his work and talk to us about it and being here for the city.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, thank you so much for this opportunity to appear. When I asked the mayor if I could make a presentation, she was very generous and, and I only have a couple hours worth of material for you right now. But no, thank you for staying late, I know it's been a long night. And I just, I do wanna reaffirm a couple of things that Mayor Gutierrez mentioned. I think one of the things that, that we've learned in working with cities and it was a great pleasure to work with, with you mayor on the governor's advisory committee, was understanding how difficult it's been for you all to manage your budgets with local government aid up and down and sometimes mid-year being pulled back. That's a terrible way to run a government, it's a terrible way to run a business. And one of the things that's really been a problem is just the one chart shows that over, since the last decade, property taxes have increased over eighty percent over the last decade. A large part of that was the fact that we had, at the state level, we had nine budget deficits out of eleven years during part of that timeframe. Local government aid was cut eight times during that time. Local government aid was cut eight times during that time. So one of the things that the governor wanted to do with the DFL legislature was to make some changes, and I'll, I'll bring about the tools in just a moment. But I think one of the things that we wanted to do was to try to become better partners and restore the partnership, because if you can't be really good partners, if you can't count on us to deliver the local government aid that we promised. One of the good news stories this last week about the, the billion dollars, billion dollars, it sounds really good to say, billion dollar surplus instead of a $5 billion deficit. But the billion dollar surplus is really good because not only is there a billion dollar surplus for this year, but for '16 and '17, there's now projected over $2 billion surplus. And in that budget, we have projected an increase in local government aid in that budget, and we've also have, in the long term, want to sustain our, our approach to local government aid. I just wanted to show you the tools. One of the things that I've done in going around the state and talking to city councils and county commissions is to show the tools that we have. And the good thing about the toolbox is that if I pulled out the tools, I won't forget to mention anything. One of the things we did was we increased property tax refunds by about 100, I think it's $140 million increase in property tax refunds. And this time, the state's funding it directly. You'll all remember the Homestead Credit that was not always funded by the state, that you, that people, the county and the cities had to pick up, but this is being funded entirely by the state. We also increased county program aid for the counties to the tune of $40 million a year increase in county program aid. One of your favorites, we increased local government aid by $80 million. That brings the total to $506 million a year now for local government aid. We actually put in place the sales tax exemption. Some of you may remember back in the 1990s when it was instituted. It was another one of those so-called gimmick things, and so now towns, cities, and, and counties won't have to pay sales tax for most of their purchases for government services. It's not only more simple, it just makes sense. More things in there than I thought. School aid increase over $485 million in school aid increase to local schools for the, for both the formula and, and, and local, local school. And as I mentioned, township aid increase also for the first time in a long time, township's got $10 million in, 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 in funding. So I just want to conclude by saying that we really feel like we've stood up to be better partners going forward. We want to, we worked really well with Mayor Gutell and the other 14 mayors as part of the advisory committee to figure out how to redo the formula, which is critical. But we also have the tools now in place to fund government at a level we think is sustainable, and we think in the future will be here. I'm going to continue to talk to cities and counties the rest of this month, and we will obviously hope that we can come to a final analysis where, you know, folks can get property tax relief. We all know that property taxes are regressive, and they hit people really hard that have fixed incomes or, or low incomes, and businesses will get hard, hit hard, too. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I appreciate the opportunity to come tonight, and I wish you luck. I know your decisions are really tough. I think city council work is, is some of the best and most difficult work in this state, and I applaud your service. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Council?
I would just comment, I appreciate the work that you've done. It's good to know that you wish to remain consistent over the future. That's been our biggest problem and dilemma. And I've been on the council all those years when we had all those cuts, so. And I know that elections take place every two years, so I am somewhat skeptical, so you'll have to pardon us for saying we don't know exactly who will be on the legislature in two years. So, you know, and I, but I do appreciate the things, I think the sales tax made eminently good sense. We ought not to be taxing other jurisdictions. So I appreciate that, and I hope to see over a long, over a longer period of time that we don't have to worry about it, that, that system works, that it makes good sense, and that it's logical, and that we can count on it.
Well, thank you. And I think one of the things we also will be counseling the legislatures is to not do levy limits and to really leave the decisions at the local. We've got to trust you all. You're here, you're in contact with your voters and citizens, and you need to know, make your decisions the way you need to make them. If you need to raise them a certain amount, that's, you know best, and we have to let you make those decisions. So thank you.
And if I can, Your Honor?
Please.
The other comment was, we had to make some really tough decisions because the most expensive thing we have is our people, and that's what we were cutting. And cutting services, cutting staff, because we had to. We had no choice, especially when we lost money in the middle of a year. We had to balance our budget. We're required to.
Well, yes, Madam, Councilmember. And another issue, too, is transportation. I know that's a tough issue for you all, and that's the next big thing, I think, Frank. Don't know what, whether it will happen in 2014 or not, but I'm convinced that with the mission that we're on, with Commissioner Zelli that I've been working with, Transportation Commissioner and the governor, that, that we're going to put together a vision, and we're going to figure out a way to fund it. We just cannot push funding some of our roads and bridges off to you all, and then you in turn have to push it off to the taxpayers, and that's just a hard place to go for infrastructure spending like that. And so that's another area I think we can help in, I hope.
Good. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Garcia?
I just wanted to say to the Commissioner, and, and, and please relay to the governor that, you know, this has been an administration, I, I think that has been, that has looked at the state and the whole state, not just the corporate folks, not just businesses, but really looked at it in a way that really respects the working folk, that respects the homeowner and, and the school system, and has really tried to govern so that it's fair and equitable and, and, you know, and, and I think that the surplus has shown that you've all have done a wonderful job, and please accept or thank you, thank yous.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, and I'll tell that to the governor. I appreciate it.
And City Manager Steve.
Yeah, Mayor, if I might, if I might follow the Commissioner, I've got a couple of slides I'd like to put up. I'd like to kind of follow what the Commissioner is saying, because I, it, it's really refreshing to hear somebody from state government basically say some of the same things that I've been saying for the last, I don't know, 25, 30 years here, in terms of what it takes to get, to keep a city like Richfield viable, and to keep us stable, and to not tax people out of their homes. And as the Commissioner said, property taxes are a very regressive tax, and to lay all of the, all of the burden of providing the basic services that we have to as a, as a municipality on the backs of residential property taxpayers, it's a killer. But I, I kind of like to follow up with, just to review a couple of slides for people who may have not seen the presentation we've done. I've only got like three slides, so.
Okay.
You don't have to, nobody has to brace themselves in their chair that I'm going to go on and on. But I'll, I just want to put up three slides to kind of just show what the Commissioner was saying and what we've been dealing with.
Yeah. If I can while you're crossing, may I, Your Honor?
Certainly.
I just wanted to say on behalf of the city of Richfield, I sit on both the 35W Solutions Alliance and the 494 Corridor Commission. Richfield is a member of both, since both freeways go right through our city. And we are certainly going to be supportive, I am sure, of any improvements we can get in transportation dollars, because we know they're needed.
And that's, that's a killer for the cities, too. Yeah, thank you. And we may have a few more questions as we move. Don't you miss the stool? Is that one of the legs from the stool that I saw?
Toolbox. I, I didn't catch that it was the toolbox. Now I really appreciate all your props.
Well, I think what the Commissioner is saying, and when you, I think a couple of slides kind of say it all. What happens to Richfield, a city that is dependent on a partnership with the state of Minnesota, if I can get the folks to focus in on this in the other room.
There they go.
Okay. This is the whole issue of local government aid, something that we, that we depend on to run government here in Richfield, and what's happened to us. And you can see the kind of reductions that we've had. You can look at, you know, losing $1.9 million of local government aid, looking at getting unallotted $561,000, looking at getting unallotted $620,000. These are mid-year things that cause us great consternation, and, you know, once we've been half, halfway through the year, I can't bring the money back. If we were, you know, we adopted a budget expecting to get a certain amount of money, and all of a sudden it disappears mid-year, there's not much you can do about it. What can you do about it? Well, this is one of the pictures, and it, it's really indicative of what we've done. In 2002, Richfield had 230 full-time employees. Right now, going into 2014, we're down to 189. That's a significant decrease. And you just saw earlier that we had six, or six or seven, nine dispatchers, but several of them, seven or so were full-time dispatchers that we closed up shop on. And that's part, again, of trying to meet the future and trying to count on a, on a partnership with the state of Minnesota. What happens to the taxpayers in Richfield when you get that kind of bouncing back and forth of local government aid? This. This isn't pretty. Tax increases that we've had to have when we've lost all the aid, 8.4%, 10%, 6.88%, 6.84%, 4.5%. In 2014, what, what's before you right now is 1.15%. What we want, what the city council wants, I believe, is not to have happened what happened in 2003, when we had a 6% tax decrease and then had to turn around by going up 7%, and then this started this ugly three years. I think what people want to have is kind of some kind of stability, and hopefully if the partnership continues with the state of Minnesota, so that we feel comfortable in being able to count on local government aid, I think we can get, keep these tax levies relatively low and still get the things done that we need to get done. So I applaud the state and how they're looking at dealing with their partnership with, with local government.
Yeah, and one of the things we didn't like was it jumping around, too, in one of the goals of, in one of the goal-setting sessions, I think some of the council members were there, so you were certainly there, was to try to keep it a little bit more level and not have the jumps up and down for our folks, too, back home, because that was impacting them highly. But before us, we've got a policy decision here. And this is also, Commissioner Franz asked me, you know, what could we do? Could we do a little bit more? And, and it gives them some kind of ammunition to take back to the legislature when they go ask. This is a, this is a political policy question, and it's a question we have to weigh. Have we done a lot? Yes. Could we do more? Maybe. I want to know, I want to weigh in and see what council members might think about. We have two other options before us. We could increase the LGA by $50,000, or we could increase it by $100,000 and help this one time this year. I wouldn't think that we maybe could do that all the time, but maybe we could this year? Counsel? Ed Garcia?
I don't know.
I, we, we've been talking for five years about weaning ourselves from LGA. Now we're doing feel-good talk because we have a good year. I endorse the governor, I endorse the state, but I'm not about to change path or change course. We, we agreed, and we, we voiced the exact same agreement at weaning, but I think she feels the same way, a weaning off it. And what we have, if it does come in, if we get a bonus, we save it, and we save it for the, for the projects that Steve put in the attachment to the memo. And I'll just simply state that, that there's no such thing as, how about just this one time? Doesn't work that way. It's the same thing as a drunk taking the one drink thinking he's over. You start, you start dipping in, and I appreciate the money, and I appreciate what we can do with it, but let's do with it what we propose to do, and that's put it in the rainy day fund and use it. Chris has been working his butt off trying to, to, to keep us liquid, and we, our bond ratings went up despite what we showed, we were shown there about losing and, and having it decertified. And to, to step back now and to say, you know, let's, let's do a feel-good thing, and let's, let's take 50,000 or 100,000 so we can do the levy a little bit more. We're not doing a service to our constituents by doing that. What we're doing is just deferring the pain. Administrations change, and, and leading parties change. And, and I have no reason to believe that, that what, what Commissioner told us is, is true, that they want to partner with us. But, but we've, we keep going down that slippery path, and we're right back where we were. I think we do exactly what we said. We wean ourselves off it. When we get it, and we get a bonus like that, we use it for the future projects that are going to cost us $31 million, and our, and our constituents are going to have to pay for. So let's do it the right way. Let's continue the path we've chartered for ourselves for the last five years. Thank the governor, thank all the, the people over there, but let's do what we told the constituents we're going to do, and let's not slip back. That's, that's the position I'm taking.
Councilmember?
I would concur. The, our biggest thing is we have, I mean, we're an older suburb, we are dealing with all sorts of infrastructure issues. And for us, looking at a $32 million infrastructure hit that we have coming, and we know it's coming, is a huge deal. We have already helped to build the Penn Avenue Bridge on behalf of the city of Richfield for the state of Minnesota. We did the same thing with the Lindale Avenue Bridge with the assistance, of course, of Congressman Sable and the dollars we were able to get. We have really done our part, and I think we need to use those funds to try and do the other infrastructure that we know we're going to have to pay for. So I can appreciate why you're here, and we appreciate the good work you're doing, but we're going to need those dollars in the city, and we have them, and I think we need to preserve them.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to agree with the two previous council members. I'm really concerned. We need a rainy day fund. You know, luckily, we don't have the plumbing problem Minneapolis does with their mains breaking every day and that, but we don't know that won't happen. I think we need to position ourselves to look at that infrastructure and, and get ready, you know, for what might come ahead, and count on this LGA as a great thing. We thank the governor and all that, and we'll take all you'll give us. And use it wisely for the citizens and kind of plan for what might be in the future. And, you know, next year, when we come down the, the pipe, if we're, you know, we can always look at maybe not having such a levy, because we are in good financial situation, maybe paying down bonds and stuff like that. So what we do today is going to affect what we're going to be doing in 2015, so.
And I think, Commissioner, what I'm hearing here is something that I, I, I think I reiterated to you. It's not that we don't appreciate everything, but we got our hands slapped really hard, and it's really painful. And I think we have to look out for our city a little bit, and I think maybe as the relationship grows and we come back and we see a lot more years, I think we might be able to work a lot more together, to do a lot more for, for the Commissioner and for the state and for our property tax owners. I'm, I'm, we're always looking out for them. We always are. I, I wish I could give you more, but it doesn't look like the council, and I, I don't blame them. It was, it's been a tough few years. I literally became mayor and thought I was going to be working with all this redevelopment and the, the bottom dropped out of the economy. And that was a tough four years to, to work. But I will, I will join my colleagues in making a motion. Do you have anything to say, Councilmember Garcia? Do you want to?
Well, you know, during all of this, I just, I've been on the council now almost a year, and I know how painful it's been. It's always been, you know, a kind of, do we toss a coin? Are we going to get it? What do we, you know, and we pray a lot about it sometimes. But our, the city manager and the staff have, have really done a lot of stuff that's been paid, painful for them, because they've had to increase their workload, because we can't hire the stuff that, the staff that's been needed. And I agree, although, you know, I, I do have, I do have, I, I, I think a lot of optimism that, as the Commissioner said, you know, things are going to continue to get better. And, and I, and I, and I've got to have that optimism, because I, I do, I do believe that things are going to turn around in this country, and, and I'm hopeful, and I, and hopefully the next election nationwide will prove it. But I'm just an eternal optimist, and, and I think we've got good leadership on the state level. I know we have it in the city level, so I, we just continue to do the best we can.
And I want to, I want to thank the staff, too, because when I brought this to them, I said, can we just do a what-if? Can we just look at it? And then when I had a conversation with Myron, he said, well, let me come in. And the governor's actually asked him to, to stomp around and, and visit everybody. So I said, well, come on, if he's going to come on in, you might as well visit us, too. It's been all around the state. Well, why not Richfield, right? This has got to be your favorite suburb. Well, I, I, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for coming. Do you have any other comments you want to? Do you have any other comments you want to?
May I ask a question of Steve? This was the-
The article.
The article about the, the cities across the metro area. And I, and for Richfield, it says, our median valued home was one-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, and it indicated that the percent change in tax for a median valued home in Richfield is down four-point-six percent. And I think if I remember correctly, when we had our budget discussions, eighty-five percent of our taxpayers actually got a reduction in taxes. Is that correct?
Yeah, actually, it's, I wronged it. It's, it's eighty-four-point-something percent of Richfield residents got a tax decrease.
Yeah, so-
With the levy, with the levy, with the preliminary levy that you had.
And didn't we use four-hundred-thousand of our-
Yes.
LGA this year?
Uh, three-hundred-thousand.
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 We did use two lower.
I think I know how the vote's going to go, and I guess I would like to suggest after we complete it that we also send a letter to the, to the Governor and Finance that says, we appreciate what you've done. And by the way, we've reduced taxes on eighty-four-point-whatever percent of our homeowners.
And we'll continue to work at this.
Yes.
And the other part of it is, the money that you don't spend on operating, you, you will have to come up with money for the city portion of Sixty-Sixth Street, Portland, and Nicollet. And that's going to happen very quickly.
Yes.
So you're either going to have to sell bonds and have a debt levy to pay the bonds, or hopefully, you can take the money that, whatever money you don't use, and you can use that money to, to pay the share of that, of that project and not have to have a future debt. I mean, so it's, in the end, one way or the other, that money will buy down property taxes, definitely.
Yeah. Yes, it does.
One way or the other, it will.
Yes, and I know that when I had a conversation, and we talk at length, Myron Franz and I do, about the, the whole transportation issue.
Yeah.
And he says that he has spoken at length with Commissioner Zelli, or Commissioner Transportation, regarding the issues that a lot of suburbs and even rural areas are finding themselves with roads. They're just, just going to crap. I mean, that's really how to put it.
Right.
I mean, we're all in the same boat. And I want to thank you for having those hard conversations and that you're crossing and talking across boundaries. Because I think we need to do that, and we need to find some new creative ways to how to, how to manage this. And I would be happy to engage the regional council mayors or whoever I can to help move that forward. I know we're already talking transportation and that, in the Move Minnesota campaign. So we would be very happy to have that conversation. So, thank you. At this time, I would make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the twenty thirteen revised, twenty fourteen proposed budget and tax levy and related resolutions. Second. Is there other just conversation or discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I will move that we send that letter from the city to the Governor.
We'll do that. Mayor, can I just say one last thing?
Please.
Part of what we did, we used some money for the, we had a remodeling of our old fire station over on Penn Avenue, which is going to get done one of these days, the very last pieces of it by the, by Friday. But it's, it's a beautiful renovation of an old fire station that needed to get done, because when that station was done, there weren't a lot of female firefighters, number one, and the place was basically kind of falling apart. But we used, there was local, part of that local government aid helped to pay for the renovation of that fire station, so the taxpayers didn't have to pay for it.
It does look good, there's only a few pieces missing, and I love the silver on the top.
There's five pieces missing that they're going to have by Friday.
I saw them out there working in the cold.
Yep.
City managers report?
You know, the one thing I want to report, and Councilmember Fitz Henry talked about it. We lost our dispatchers. After seventy-three years of having a dispatch center here, we couldn't afford to invest in the capital infrastructure that we needed to keep a dispatch center. We couldn't afford to keep paying the ongoing salary of keeping dispatchers. So we went and we contracted with Edina and saved a lot of money for the city of Richfield. We've been listening, and I know that Public Safety Director Sandell has been listening, and Wayne Keewich, Fire Chief, has been listening. I've been listening.
Me?
Tom, I'm sure you've been listening.
Yeah.
Edina does a fine, they're doing a fine job. They're doing a fine job. We have a couple of our dispatchers who were hired on by Edina. So I think that the, you know, the residents of Richfield are, they're not going to notice a blink of difference in service. We're getting great service from Edina. And I just think it's, it's an opportunity for us to, again, to, to work with our neighboring cities to provide a service at considerable savings to the residents, but not reduce their service. And it's unfortunate that we had to lose our employees to do it, but as you said, Tom, they all found jobs, and one decided was able to retire, so in the end, it worked out.
I, I was just going to ask if you had a question, if you had an answer to my question yet about the, there's a, the, I asked about the Planning Commission member and the, hold the Tasty Bread Store.
Yes.
Yes.
The, the Tasty Bread, that food's going to be catered in.
Oh, it's going to be catered.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you, if you read the Planning Commission, they had, the Tasty Bread Store is now going to be repurposed to be a daycare, which is great.
Yeah.
It's really, but I noticed, because I worked in a daycare years and years ago, many years ago, and there was no kitchen. And I'm going, how are they going to feed the children? And so there wasn't a kitchen in there, so I, there's going to cater. Okay, that answers my question, thank you. Claims and payroll? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, you all are paid. Seeing no further action, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.